Good evening and welcome to the twice monthly meeting of Westminster's mayor and common council. During the public health emergency, we will be conducting our meetings virtually, and they will be available and streamed live on the city's Facebook page, as well as the Community Media Center channel and website. We'll begin as we do every meeting with the pledge to the flag, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As we begin our meeting, I'd like to take a moment to note the passing of our former colleague and common council president, Ed Caldwell. Ed served three terms on the Westminster Common Council, as well as time as a member of the Westminster Public Utilities Commission, the City's Board of Zoning Appeals, the Parks Board, and Historic District Commission. We're very sorry to learn of his passing, and we extend our deepest sympathies to his family. I'd like to note that copies of tonight's agenda and the entire information packet that the council will be using are available online on the city's website. First, we'll consider the approval of the minutes. We have the minutes from the council's last meeting on January 25th, 2021. There's a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move, Mr. President.
I'll second it.
There's a motion by Mr. Cavaci and a second by Mr. Dayhoff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. We have one item on the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent count?
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. There's a motion by Ms. Gilbert to approve and a second by Mr. Dayhoff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the consent calendar is approved. Now it's time for our report from the mayor. Mr. Mayor, good evening.
Good evening. Thanks, Mr. President. A couple of things. First off, I wanted to just take a moment and thank our Public Works Department. Not only have we gotten a lot of snow lately, it's been spread apart in a fashion that right when they're done, kind of plowing and charling this out, more snow lands on the ground, and it looks like that's going to continue for about another week. So I know they've been working a lot of the time, putting a lot of work into it, and I just wanted to recognize them for that. The next, I wanted to, just, you know, we've been, we've been busy in the recruiting process for our couple of positions and doing some other things. There's one item I wanted to bring to council's attention, in case anyone has any kind of concern for it. So the Maryland Heritage Areas Authority reached out to Ms. Gruber in late January about upcoming filing deadline for submitting an intent to apply for our next round of grant funding. And they encouraged her to consider filing for additional funding for the Durbin House project. She subsequently followed the attached intent to apply. I have, I had that information, but she, she followed it and asking for a grant for $100,000. Now that would need to be matched by another $100,000. So the city may be able to leverage some funds already received for Wakefield as its match. That's yet to be determined. We did speak with Ms. Levann about this to make sure that filing this doesn't appear to make us bound to, to, to accept it and, and to, you know, have to match those funds. But in order for her to, to follow the application, we'll need to, I'll have to sign it as, as, you know, as the property owner, as the executive for the city. So the overall $200,000 project budget would provide for securing, I have some notes here, the building envelope of the Durbin House, including necessary repairs to the foundation, moisture mitigation efforts, front porch restoration, side porch replication, and then wood windows restoration. One of the MHA grant program application requirements is a property owner letter of consent. So that's what we have to, that's what I have to sign. So I would like to sign that and send that in. If anybody has any issues with that, you know, reach out to me. But we've been talking about doing something well with the Durbin House for a while here, and I think there's a tight deadline for this, for the funding. So this is something we just started to discuss today. I want to bring it to everybody's attention. I know we've been discussing a lot of stuff with the Durbin House. But like, it, it looks like the grant application does not bind the city in any way if we, if we elected to decline the funds. So, so I think it's a good idea to leave that on the table and to go ahead and sign that. And, you know, again, I just wanted to bring everyone's attention to make sure there are no concerns. You know, this is something we found out today, and it looks like we have, you know, we'd like to, you know, to move on it, and we have a little bit of time to do it. So that is the conclusion of my report. Mr. President, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move on now to reports from standing committees. We have the pandemic update season. So move on to reports from standing committees. Mr. Dayhoff, would you like to share any news from the Arts Council?
Yeah, the Arts Council opened up the registration for the 14th Annual Peep Show. The Peep Show this year is going to run from March 26th through April the 5th, and it's going to be a hybrid format this year. And the live component of the Peep Show is going to be at the Town Mall of Westminster. Decorators must, must register by March the 1st. And there's some other instructions. There's an entrance fee. If you go to, if you go to the Arts Council website, or if you call 848-4272, and again, that's 410-848-7272, you can get much more information on the Peep Show. And that's a good thing for, that's a good thing for the Arts Council, and it's a good thing for Westminster. It brings folks to town. The Arts Council also announced that Debbie Titus has been selected as the 2020 Volunteer of the Year, recognizing her for years of service over at the, the Arts Council. And every year, if some of you are familiar and aware, every year when the Maryland General Assembly is in, in office, in session, there is a Maryland Arts Day, and that's when folks get together to advocate for cultural and artistic programs in the state of Maryland, and that's on February the 1st. No, it's on February the 11th. It's on February the 11th. And it's going to be Zoom this year, but what, there's an interesting, there's a nice twist to it this year, and that Tom Sterner, our Tom Sterner, who designed Sprouts over at the new administrative office building, he's going to be presenting on the Zoom presentation. And I think, thank you for the time, Mr. President. I think that'll do it for the Arts Council report.
All right. Thank you very much. Move on now to, I'm sorry, Mr. Dayhoff, I thought you had more than that. I wasn't ready. Economic and Community Development Committee, Mr. Yingling.
No report tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Nothing for the Finance Committee, other than the budget season has begun, and we'll be sharing more information with you soon about those discussions. Personnel Committee.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Public Safety, Mr. Cavaci.
Yeah, Mr. President, I have a, have a few things. Wanted to comment quickly on a few items that the PD is, is focusing on. One of the things are, the security camera project is moving along. Chief and I were talking about this just, just today, and he said that it looks like they might benefit from some existing cameras already in, in some public spaces, some, some publicly owned buildings where they were planning on potentially putting some cameras, but they might be able to tap into the systems that are already there, which would then allow us to leverage some of the funding for some of these cameras, put cameras elsewhere, which is, which is great news. It looks like they're picking out some of those spaces and things are moving along nicely. Also, I wanted to commend the chief. He is working with the Chamber of Commerce and their Leadership Carroll Group to coordinate the Public Safety, Justice and Law Day. And he's handling the, the coordination of that for all the public safety agencies related to that, including, you know, the state's attorney and, and the sheriff and things like that. So I think we should all be very proud of his work there. That shows a, a lot of leadership on his part, you know, for the, for the entire county. So kudos to the chief on that. Also, he is working with the NAACP related to communicating some of our, you know, policing efforts and, and he's even going to be doing a presentation related to Black History Month at Century High School through that. So, again, great work. Crime continues to be very low statistically, you know. 20 was a, was another good year. We've seen the trend continue down for quite some time now. It's been continuing to decline. Even prior to COVID, it was, it was, it was continually declining and, and has done so. I know there was an article or an op-ed piece, I believe, it was in the paper within the past day or two, talking about, I think, a one-month statistic related to overdoses. And I know Westminster, as it often does, gets mentioned, but, you know, Westminster encompasses a lot more than Westminster City. It, you know, it, 211572158 area codes, and you never want to see any uptick in, in overdoses and drug use, but I did want to point out that I, I, I think that was a little bit misleading, only in that it was, it was not all city proper where some of those increases had taken place. Some of those were not inside city limits. Not, not that it matters completely, because of course it's tragic either way, but I did, did want to point that out. That's it, Mr. President. Thank you for the time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Public Works, Mr. Yingling.
Yeah, a few things, Mr. President. First, I'd like to echo the mayor's words and thank you to the Public Works staff for doing, you know, obviously they're always just doing such a great job. But, you know, the snow obviously takes a big toll on them, so they've just been doing a fantastic job. Thank you for that. Public Works scheduled a meeting, just so you all know when it is. It's February 19th at 9:00 a.m. Going to do some updates on the water reuse project. I think that's going to be discussed, but there's also been a concerned resident about the Colonel Roser alleyway and some traffic going along there. So this is something the Public Works Committee has looked at many times over the last few years. There's no silver bullet fix there, but we're going to obviously discuss it again with Mr. Glass and Matthews and Mr. Dayhoff and the mayor and I. And so we're going to come back hopefully eventually with some sort of recommendation and whatever the action or inaction may be, we're going to make sure that it is, we're taking into accounts everybody's concerns and how it could impact everybody, the business owners, the property owners surrounding that alleyway. So just wanted to make everybody aware, again, it is February 19th, 9:00 a.m. Going to take, take care of that virtually. Any comments, questions, feel free to reach out to myself or anybody else on the committee. And that is my report, Mr. President.
Very good. Thank you for getting into that, Mr. Yingling. We'll all appreciate it. Recreation and Parks, Mr. Dayhoff.
Wanted to mention that for recreation and parks, I, I believe if not, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Gruber will have a, a bit of a more comprehensive report about some of our activities, but I wanted to mention that the Westminster Road Runners Club, of which I'm a member, we've decided to, to cancel this year's Main Street Mile. And I don't think they really have any choice under the current pandemic safety guidelines. I also wanted to mention the passing of Frank Schaefer. Frank was a persistent volunteer with the Westminster Road Runners Club and the Main Street Mile. And he was also a, a dynamic helping us out with the, the development of the Wakefield Valley Trail. I worked with him a good bit when he was over at the county, when I was chair of the Environmental Affairs Advisory Board back in the 90s, but I also had the pleasure of working with him when he was the, the town administrator for New Windsor. And I think that, I think that Carroll County and Westminster will really miss Frank and, and all his number of, of positive contributions to our community, and, and we're really sad about his passing. Mr. President, I think that'll do it for right now for, for the Rec and Parks report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. And just for the Technology Committee, I'll just mention that we had hoped to have some news for you on, you know, some progress on extending the fiber outside the city limits. We've still got a little bit of work to clean up on the agreements that we need to get in place to be able to do that, but we hope to have a report for you on that at the next meeting and to seek your approval on the final, final agreements there. And that's it for the standing committee reports. Now move on to council comments, discussion. When council members get a chance to share any, any other information that they'd like to comment on, we'll start with Mr. Cavaci.
Yeah, Mr. President, I have a couple of things. Unfortunately, geez, it's, seems like it was a tough week in terms of loss of folks related to the city. I, I wanted to bring up an individual that worked in the Rec and Parks Department, Mr. Mark Slater. He wasn't there a long time in terms of being a city employee, but he's been heavily involved in the Rec and Parks community countywide. Particularly, he played a big role in, in the lacrosse community, and he was instrumental. Mr. President, you'll probably remember back many years ago, we brought a big tournament into the community that brought in about 250 teams in its heyday. So it was bringing in about 20, 25,000 people for a weekend, and it had a pretty significant positive economic impact for downtown. Well, Mr. Slater really took the ball and ran with that. You know, after a year or two of my kind of involvement, he, he kind of grabbed it and then ran with it, and it's still going on. It, it's smaller than it used to be, but it's still a pretty big tournament, and the city definitely benefited from it for a lot of years. And his loss is definitely felt. His, his virtual funeral yesterday, there were quite a few people. And there was pages and pages on the Zoom meeting and lots of speakers. So I just wanted to take a moment and mention it. It's a big loss for the recreation community. Two other quick things in response to some of the other comments that were made during the reports. During the mayor's report, he talked about the Durbin House and this grant. You know, I think we all can agree that our intention as a group is to do something with the Durbin House and not let it continue to languish. And if we can get some funding that it sounds like would help us maybe, maybe not necessarily restore it, but at least do some, something to prevent the continued decay of the building. I, I think that's a positive thing. So, Mr. President, for me, you know, I think, I think that's a, a good move. And then also on the Arts Council, Mr. Dayhoff, maybe if you'd be willing to communicate back to them, I, I was really happy to read a comment regarding the moving it out to the mall. Immediately I thought, oh, great, here we go. It's going to go out there and never come back downtown. But they were very clear in the article where they said this is absolutely a temporary move. Because at the end of the day, while certainly City Mall, the mall is within the city limits, we all can agree that that brings a lot of traffic downtown onto Main Street. And I certainly, for one, hope that they will get it back down there next year, because it brings a, a lot of, lot of dollars with it into downtown. So I hope they will, you know, work to make sure that happens. That's it, Mr. President. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Mr. Dayhoff.
Yeah, I, I really appreciate Mr. Cavaci bringing up Mark Slater. He made a, he was, he was only with Parks and Recs for a short period of time, but he made a very positive contribution to the, the city's recreation programs and his, his, his contributions to lacrosse are, have been pretty effective in providing that many more additional recreational opportunities for folks in, in the city. I also wanted to bring up, oh, I serve as the Assistant Secretary of the NAACP, and I want to sing the praises of Chief Ledwell for his recent presentation at the NAACP meeting. It was an excellent presentation about how it is that, that our policies and our, and our standard operating guidelines fit extremely well with much of the guidelines of eight can't wait. And perhaps the chief can explain that just a little bit better, but, but our continuum of force guidelines in the city of Westminster continues to be the, the standard for many of the, the agencies in the mid-Maryland area. I'm happy to hear about the Durbin House. I also want to include, I also want to spread that net a little bit wider with Durbin House. I think we're all on the same page that we really want to do something with, not only with Durbin House, but the old Conference Center. Let's make some hard decisions about the Conference Center as to what we want to do, whether we want to save it or whether we want to turn it into a, a field or Councilman, Councilwoman Thomas, Councilwoman Gilbert has had a number of good ideas about some pavilion out there. It might be a good pavilion location. It's already got water. It's already got electricity. But we really need to move forward with that, and I'm really excited about that. Mr. President, I was, oh, I shared the concerns about moving the Peep Show, but I was also reassured that it's, it'll come back to Westminster. I think the Councilman Cavaci, I think the guideline was, of course, social distancing. They had a little bit more space out there to work with. And I guess, Mr. President, I was curious about what is the status of our plastic bag ban? Can we revisit that a little bit? I, I had heard that there is a bill in the Maryland General Assembly. Any?
Well, our legislature, I asked the city attorney about that. As you'll recall, we enacted our ban, and then we decided to postpone it going to, going into effect during the pandemic when many people were concerned about being able to take bags into grocery stores. We pushed it back a year. It'll go into effect on July 1st of this year. My understanding is that that, that there is legislation in the state legislature, may or may not pass. If it does pass, it would certainly supersede our ordinance, but at the same time, I think state legislation usually doesn't go into effect until the fall, until October 1st, if I'm correct, at the beginning of the fiscal year. So, you know, ours, ours would be able to go into effect for a few months before the state's ban went into effect. But then would be superseded, you know, by the state's bill if one passes. And if it, one doesn't pass, ours will still be in effect. Isn't that all correct, isn't it?
Yeah, the, you won't have a big period of time during which yours is in effect, but there will be a few months before, assuming again, the state bill gets enacted, there'll be a few months during which yours is in effect, and your business community can sort of use it as a warm-up.
Mr. President, a follow-up?
Mr. Dayhoff.
So ours goes in effect July the 1st?
That's right.
Okay, okay, okay. And I'm, I'm really happy to, I'm really pleased to report that many of the local businesses have transitioned extremely well to, to paper bags. And, and candidly, I, I think it's just so much nicer a way to provide goods and services with the, with the paper bags. I'm really happy about it. We'll see what the Maryland General Assembly does. One never knows. Also, I was kind of curious, what's the status of our annual audit? I haven't heard about that for a while. And I'm always, I'm always interested in that. I guess that's, since I'm like the fourth generation, to be interested in the city's finances. I'm always curious about that. Mr. Mr. Mayor, you have something?
Oh, no, I thought you were doing the audit this year, Mr. Dayhoff.
I'll be happy to.
No, I just, I didn't have anything.
I'm sure Ms. Colston can give us an update on where that stands.
Yes, we're actually in the final stages of wrapping it up. We're in the final proofing and whatnot. We, we expect to have it by the end of the month, the final, final draft for you guys.
Okay. And then we can go to Nashville.
Exactly.
Okay. That's a deal. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Ms. Gilbert.
Wow, I don't know if I want to follow up after, after Councilman Dayhoff. So I don't have too much, but I will follow with everyone else who has gone previously and say kudos to the work that we're going to be doing on the Durbin House. I am, it's a thumbs up for me. I am excited about that project. So I'm, I'm good with that. I just wanted to draw a little bit of attention to, to Major Gibson's 9:00 p.m. routine. It was highlighted in the Carroll County Times just a couple of days ago. I see it's getting a lot of attention, and it is a great social media regular that I'm almost looking for it every night at 9:00 p.m. I hope a lot of the community is also. So I just wanted to say thank you and, and congratulations out to him for, for that idea. And, and that I know Councilman Cavaci is aware of that, and I just wanted to highlight it in our, in our council updates tonight. So that's really all I have. I don't have anything else exciting.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Mr. Yingling, anything from you?
No, no comment.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Yingling. And move on now. Next item on the agenda are bids. We have one bid for your approval tonight. It is a purchase of a replacement utility vehicle for the wastewater plant. And I believe Mr. Glass is still on vacation. Is, Ms. Matthews, were you going to respond to that, or is there somebody else who can do that?
I'm here.
Oh, you are? Oh, Mr. Dixon, I'm sorry.
That's all right. The city adopted physical year 2021 sewer fund budget allocates funding for the replacement of trucks and equipment. The proposed purchases, the last vehicle slash equipment purchased for physical year 2021 for the sewer fund. The requested vehicle, utility vehicle, is available via existing contract between the state of Maryland, Maryland BPO number 001B1600156, and Rippon Equipment Company located at 9640 Liberty Road in Frederick, Maryland. Westminster's procurement code allows the city to piggyback on this competitively awarded contract. The utility vehicle being purchased is a Covada RTV X1100CW-H. Further information is provided in the attached quote on the specification sheet. The cost of the unit is $17,361.15 exclusive of all selected options. Project funding for the 2021 budget for this was $18,000, as noted above. The proposed purchase has an associated cost of $17,361.15. State recommends that the mayor and common council authorizes the purchase of the replacement utility vehicle from Rippon Equipment located at 9640 Liberty Road in Frederick, Maryland in the total amount of $17,361.15.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dick. Right, there you go. You have Mr. Dick's explanation. Came in under budget. Very good. May I have a motion to approve the bid?
I'll move, Mr. President. I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Cavaci and a second by Mr. Dayhoff to approve the bid. Is there any discussion or any questions for Mr. Dick? Hearing none? Looks like you're ready for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the bid is approved. There you go, Mr. Dick. You can get your truck.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the, is unfinished business. And the unfinished business, you'll recall, is our last meeting. Ms. Gruber took a moment to update us on the, on her planning for some projects that could go forward, you know, in a, in a well-planned socially distant sort of way that we can start beginning to have some of our city activities again. And she promised that she would have a deeper update for us at the next meeting when we had some time for that. So, Ms. Gruber, please go ahead.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. Since the last meeting, the Recreation and Parks Department has submitted and received favorable COVID-19 safety plans for the Celtic Canter, the Wine Stroll, and the Flower and Jazz. Covid nineteen safety plans for the Celtic canter, the wine stroll and the flower and jazz festival. Um I did send those plans out to you in advance of this evening's meeting, but I will um take a moment to highlight. Uh some of the safety measures that we have put in place and some of the comments that were received from the Health Department. So as originally submitted for the Celtic canter, we decided that um it would be safe and prudent to hold the race. At essentially three separate times out at the Wakefield Valley Golf Course. So we will have um. Basically corrals of runners starting at nine A M, ten A M and eleven A M, and the number of those runners will be limited to two hundred. Um because the large group gathering size that is in effect also accounts for staff and volunteers. So two hundred runners will start at nine um and they will be cleared out for another two hundred runners to start at ten. And then another two hundred runners at eleven. If the response is so brisk that we have more than six hundred people that would like to run the Celtic canter. We can add additional time slots. Um staging area for the event allows for a half mile to a mile backup. Where runners will be staged at cones that will be six feet apart and they will slowly move across the start line. Their runtime will start when their chip crosses the start line and their runtime will stop when their chip crosses the finish line. The finish line will be divided into three separate chutes to keep runners socially distanced in this in the finish chute. And that also has a quarter of a mile approach back to the parking lot. So um we've allowed ourselves. A great deal of distance to start the run and to end the run to keep runners um spaced out as much as possible. We aren't going to have any of our typical offerings. Um certainly no Irish festival, no live entertainment, nothing that would encourage runners to hang around. Um in groups. The race briefing will be pre-recorded and emailed out to runners. At least a week in advance of the race and then again forty eight hours in advance of the race. So there won't be a large group gathering to listen to the course details and the rules. There will be no live awards. Awards will be posted um on the website after the race and the award ceremony will be recorded and posted after the fact. Refreshments will be individually packaged and handed to runners in paper lunch bags as they uh cross the finish line and head to their cars. And packet pickup will be held in a safe and socially distant manner. So we will still do packet pickup in person. Um we plan to use the first floor of the Babylon Building and that way we can have one way in and one way out. Um for anybody that's showing up on site that needs to see a staff person, anyone just picking up a packet will use our concession window in that. Uh particular building. So. With all of those restrictions in place, um we were, our plan was endorsed to go ahead and hold the event. Um we did get everything set up in a new registration system this year and emailed the opportunity out to uh runners. This past Friday, and this was just our mailing list of returning Celtic canter runners. And as of today, we already had one hundred and forty four people registered. So we were really um fairly pleased at the initial response. And um certainly think that it is a good sign for uh that progress to continue. We anticipate uh making the opportunity available to the general public, meaning if you haven't run the Celtic canter with us before. Um that opportunity should go live between uh Wednesday and Friday this week. So that is the current update on Celtic canter, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have on that particular event.
Any questions for Ms. Gruber on the Celtic canter? Sounds like a well thought out plan. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. I'll move into the wine stroll then if there aren't any questions. Um this is going to be quite different than what we're used to and the primary difference is its location. Of course, when you have to closely monitor a group size, um it's impossible to hold an event on Main Street because there are so many. Places where people can enter the event footprint that you can't be accounting for their presence. So in an effort to still hold the wine stroll and make sure that we are complying with the group gathering limit. Um we had requested to move this event to the Longwell parking lot. The Longwell parking lot allows us a lot of opportunities to make sure that we are complying and it's highly visible if people aren't complying because of the parking spaces. Parking spaces in the Longwell lot are nine feet apart and um so if groups of people are being assigned a parking space and we're skipping two parking spaces in between each group. That actually um affords us quite a bit of distance between the groups. So the way we envision the wine stroll working in the parking lot. Is we will sell um table tickets. So each parking space, there will be a table set up with six chairs. So you can purchase a table ticket for one to six people, but the deal is. The people in that group sitting at that table must be from the fame, the same family. So um table tickets will be a set fee of a hundred and fifty dollars. So it doesn't matter if you're purchasing that ticket for two people or six people. It will still be a hundred and fifty dollars um because we can't add tables because groups are of a smaller size because we have to keep everybody physically distanced. So the tables will be assigned and set up. Everything will be facing the stage. Uh we've gotten some great deals and some really good bands for live entertainment. So we will have live entertainment. Um during the seating times, the first seating will be eleven A M to two P M. Um that gives staff two hours to clean and sanitize everything, uh tables, chairs, strip tablecloths. You name it. If it was touched, it will get scrubbed down. Uh the second seating will be from four to seven P M. And as indicated, our group size for this will be two hundred and four festival attendees. And that is assuming that we would sell thirty four tables at our maximum amount of seating, which is six people per table. Um that allows us forty six additional bodies for our wineries, um food vendors and our staff itself. So we are excited to be bringing forward this hybrid wine stroll plan. We certainly are incredibly excited. Um that our careful plan was endorsed by the Health Department and so this evening I am bringing it before you. For your discussion as to whether or not we should proceed with the event plan as it stands.
Thank you, Ms. Gruber. I'm I'm very excited about this. I'm I'm not Irish, so I don't do the Celtic canter. But uh I do, I'm Italian, so I like wine. So I'm looking forward to the wine stroll very much. So thank you very much for uh finding a way that we can have that. Any questions for Ms. Gruber?
Mister President.
President.
Miss Miss Gilbert.
Um Mister President, um Ms. Gruber, I have one question and then I'm going to have a comment. Um the six people you said can be, should be family. So what if those six people? Say were myself, my husband and some friend of mine and their husband. We hang out all the time together, but we want to share a table. Is that possible? Or does it have to strictly be family?
It is. It could be a social group of known exposure, meaning that you have been in close contact to these people and you're comfortable. Um it will be very difficult for us to vet that. So um we use the term family, but it could be um social group that has uh been exposed prior to.
Okay, so that was my my question and then my comment um is for you and your staff. Um covid has has brought a lot to. Every municipality across the United States, and I think um those that have reimagined their activities and creatively um put a lot of energy and hard work into. Into um into the activities that you guys have done for Westminster is obviously very relevant right now and the fact that we're we're seeing some of our. Traditional um events come back to life and I know I think I speak for all of us. Um we're all excited to. To grab on some tennis shoes and maybe run the Celtic camp or maybe not, but um maybe go to the wine store or whatever it is. Um we are just excited to see them come back um in a way that um is maybe slightly different, but to know that there's a little bit of normalcy coming back and I'm. Congratulations to you and your staff because you have um not only been able to do that with our events, but going to the gym. I've gone to the gym regularly. I'm seeing that um be a safe environment. So kudos to to you and your staff because I think you guys in all of this have done a. A wonderful job. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Mister Cavaci, you had a question.
Uh wasn't really a question, just Miss Mrs. Gruber said she was bringing that to us for our comment and discussion. So I felt like I owed a quick chime in and Ms. Gilbert really hit most of the salient points, but. Wonderful job. I I think it's a great plan. Um and I'm I'm excited about it and certainly will be and hopefully enjoying one of those tables and one of those time slots. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Cavaci. Anyone else wish to be heard? All right. Thank you, Ms. Gruber. Last but not least.
Last but not least, flower.
Sorry, you finished them all. That's right. No, you're finished. That's it.
Oh, I actually have flower and jazz, Mister President.
You do. I thought you had one more. Yes, right.
Um so this was the easiest plan that we submitted. Uh there was actually, we didn't have any comments or um items that we needed to revise and send back to. The Health Department except for some items that simply just weren't included because we almost um. They're so entrenched into our daily operations at the fitness center that we didn't even think to put them on paper. So of course, everyone um who enters any of these events. Will be screened with the um appropriate covid questions, the exposure questions. Um and then the other interesting thing that was uh brought back before us with our flower and jazz plan was just more detail in our layout for. Portable restrooms and hand washing stations um and items like that. So um the flower and jazz plan actually contemplates three areas within the city. Um we would like to use City Park and the Longwell Parking Lot along with the Sherwood Parking Lot. So the reason um to take up so much space is again, it's that group limit size. If we designate three separate areas, then we can look at three separate areas as three different group gatherings, which allows us to increase our capacity. Because when you begin to delineate an area for an event and you let vendors in, they begin to count in your headcount. So um we want to make it worth everybody's while. One of the major questions that we were asking ourselves the entire time we were developing these event plans were. How can we benefit um some of the people that make their living off of these types of events? And if in fact they're coming out um to do an event, we want to make sure it's worth their while. So. We decided that um we would limit the amount of vendors and how many people they could have with them. Into each area to make sure that each area we could allow at least two hundred shoppers into at one time. So um we have a system for queuing people in the event that one of our areas has reached capacity. And in fact, if an area reaches capacity and there are people waiting to get in, we can radio the next area to see if they're at capacity. Or the third area to see if they're at capacity and we can refer those people to um other areas of the festival. If in fact we end up at capacity in all areas, we're going to develop a downtown directory and we're going to encourage our festival goers to. Shop in our downtown um area and also eat in some of our downtown restaurants. One of the things we will not have for flower and jazz this year are food vendors. Um so people will be encouraged to visit our downtown restaurants. Um in addition to the downtown directory, we are going to put some live jazz music on Locust Lane Stage. We're just going to discourage anybody sitting. And listening to that music, but we just want to create an atmosphere downtown that it's festive and alluring. Um the other thing that we're going to do is we're going to purchase um gift cards from every single downtown business who wants to participate in the downtown directory. And um we'll provide that business with a raffle jar. And when you come through our Flower and Jazz Festival gate, you'll be given a raffle ticket and you can enter that raffle ticket in. The jar at the business of your choice and at the end of the festival, the Recreation and Parks Department is going to in person visit every single business and do a live Facebook drawing. For the winner out in front of the business that we're um conducting the drawing for. So just a way to um promote our downtown. To promote the event and also to mitigate crowds and give some. Give our festival goers something else to do in the event that we can't let them into the festival footprint at the time they want to come in. And that really concludes um the plan for flower and jazz unless there are additional questions.
Right. Any other questions for Ms. Gruber? Mister President. Terrific job, you know, very impressed with all these plans. Very pleased that the Health Department has uh has blessed them as well and we are all looking forward to uh. To see these events. That's terrific. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is new business. Under new business, we have two items. The first is a discussion of the proposed body worn camera program. That will turn to Chief Ledwell. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What I would like to do is make a brief presentation as to where we're at with the status of our uh countywide body worn camera work group. And um give you an opportunity to ask any questions. And uh talk a little bit about plans for what we would propose moving forward. So as you probably know, um we formed a uh. Group, a work group throughout Carroll County within the last nine months or so uh to examine the potential implementation of. What it would take for implementation of body worn cameras here in Carroll County. Um there currently is uh one police department that that is uh using the body worn cameras and um. Several others that are anticipating uh doing so in the near future. Um also, there is currently. About four or five, I believe, proposed bills in Maryland legislate legislative process right now regarding the use of body worn cameras by law enforcement agencies in the state of Maryland. Um I'm unsure, as most of us are, as to whether any of those bills will go through, but we want to be prepared should they go through. So. What we did is as a work group, we started to look at what best practice policy is. Um we examined. Current police departments that have body worn camera programs uh implemented. We talked about things like staffing, logistics, uh equipment, options, software options. There's a significant amount of workload that goes with implementation of a body worn camera program. Uh we would have a uh increased workload. Internally here within the Police Department. The State's Attorney's Office uh essentially would have to get additional positions approved. To process uh all of the discovery video evidence to go through it and to figure out what needs to be um expunged or shielded. And um. Processing the additional um evidence that's created for each of the cases that involves a body worn camera uh video footage. So. Also, what we did was we had a trial and evaluation of equipment. So within the Westminster Police Department, we had four or have four body worn cameras. They are charged and uploaded into a docking station here at the uh police station. And then the uh video footage is tagged and put into cloud storage in um storage files. So when there's a criminal or traffic case that involves the uh body worn camera footage. Uh the State's Attorney's Office would get the discovery and would go through the uh video uh footage. So the the trial and evaluation period has been very positive. Uh uh we have captured some evidentiary uh video footage. We've also, um it's been reported to me that the uh presence of a body worn camera has helped to deescalate at least one one incident that we've been involved in. Um and uh the feedback that we're getting from our officers is overwhelmingly supportive of uh having the body worn cameras. for a number of reasons. So myself, the sheriff, the State's Attorney, and several of the other chiefs in the county were discussing, where do we go from here? And what we have or what we're considering is to potentially try to do a small incremental implementation of a body worn camera program so that we can work the bugs out in the upcoming fiscal year so that we don't overwhelm the State's Attorney's Office with more footage than they're prepared to handle. But so that we also are moving forward. So if there is a state mandate or a requirement that we have a deadline date to have body worn cameras that were prepared at that point. So a couple of things about the proposed program. There's different options out there. The one system that we were doing the trial and evaluation with, there's an upfront hardware cost and what that would cover would be the docking station, which would also double as a kiosk here at the police station. So in order to minimize expenses, what we would propose doing is sharing cameras. So when a day shift is done, they would plug in the camera, upload it, and then night shift would sign it out so that we wouldn't necessarily have to have a camera for each individual officer. We could share the cameras. So the costs would cover the installation of the docking station kiosks. We would also potentially like to outfit our transport van. When we make an arrest, we transport the back with the camera system. So the estimate on hardware upfront cost would be around $7,000. And then the cameras themselves essentially would be a monthly fee in this particular system. And that would cover providing new cameras every three years. If one would break, it would be replaced. As software updates occur, we'd get the newer version. And it would have the warranty and the maintenance contract built into it. So the two potential costs that would go with the body worn camera program would be that upfront hardware cost and then a monthly contractual agreement covering essentially the lease of the cameras and the maintenance plan and the replacement and upgrade plan licensing for the cameras. Our proposal in the in our budget request for FY22 would be around 7,000 hardware costs upfront and about 5,000 a year in the contractual amount. And that would provide us with five cameras that we could share essentially between 10 officers. It's a cloud-based system. The storage is maintained by the vendor. There wouldn't be any server costs internally. Or it's, there wouldn't be data max maximum or fees that we would pay in regard to that. We've had discussions with the State's Attorney's Office and with the sheriff about potentially centralizing any staffing requirements for implementation. That's still in early stages of just potential planning so that all the processing or the discovery of the video evidence, that any request for Freedom of Information Act, the shielding, the expunishment requests could be handled within a centralized unit that would have that expertise and have the the logistics of doing so centrally. I've already drafted out, in order to put out even the trial and evaluation cameras, I had to have a policy in place to make sure that our officers knew what they could and could not record, when they needed to turn them on and turn them off. And anything else, policy and procedure wise, that went with having even the trial cameras out there. So I've already got that into place policy wise. So I wanted to do is brief you on where we're at. What, not only my idea as far as what I would propose moving forward specifically in FY22, but moving beyond that would be. And then also kind of a snapshot of where we're at as a county and what the State's Attorney's Office and the sheriff are looking at. So I know that the State's Attorney and the sheriff are planning to go in front of the county commissioners. I believe it's on the 18th or 19th of this month to do a briefing also. So, and I wanted to open it up for any questions that you might have of me. So I'll do so at this time.
Thank you, Chief. And as I understand it, the actual item before us is you're looking for some guidance on whether or not there's support for moving forward with the program as you've outlined in your memo. And so we can, if there's any questions for the chief, and we can certainly have some discussion about the chief's proposal. Anybody like to start us off?
So, Mr. President.
Mr. Cavaci.
I guess first off, I like the idea of staging this very much as opposed to just jumping in, you know, 100%. Obviously, there's limitations, given the fact that the State's Attorney's Office has to review this. So it's not, we probably can't jump into it 100% anyway. But, you know, I did speak to some of the officers that are wearing them, and they did indicate exactly as the chief said, that they view it as a positive thing. And actually, very much, again, to what the chief said, they they said it has deescalated some situations where when people realize they're being recorded, they tend to act a little bit differently. And I think in a positive way. So that's certainly, look, if we can prevent a bad situation from happening in the first place simply by having a camera on them, that's a good thing. I mean, that's, you know, that's what we ultimately want. There's some costs involved in this. I mean, you know, we're talking 60,000 a year in ongoing perpetual, never going away costs if we continue this program at only five cameras. And obviously, we're going to need more than five. I suspect, Chief, we're probably realistically in the end going to need about 15 or so of these. We'd probably be just doing some quick math on our patrols. I'm guessing we probably need about 15 of them. So, you know, that's not chump change. You know, that's, it was an ongoing cost that's over time going to add up. So we have to be cognizant of that and figure out where that's going to come from. The capital cost isn't too bad. That's actually pretty reasonable. The one question, I guess, though, Chief, to be clear. So we make the capital investment on these units and the kiosk, and then we pay the monthly fee. And they're going to be stood behind for breakage, malfunctions. That $70 a month fee per unit, that's all inclusive, right? And so I guess what I mean, what I'm getting at is if we hot seek these things or whatever, hot, whatever it is, and we wear them out prematurely, we're going to get new ones as part of the deal. We don't have to lay that capital cost out again to replace them each time. It's just that monthly fee.
Yes. Now, my understanding is that we would either have to sole source bid this or and I'm assuming that different vendors have different contracts out there. But the ones that the work group looked at and the one that we specifically did the trial and evaluation, I attached their proposal on there.
Yes, I saw that.
And it looks like it covers the software licensing, any upgrades as they would do. They would replace the cameras as a matter of routine every three years and replacement costs for cameras for ones that would break or provide maintenance. But I believe when they were doing the presentation to us, they said that they just swap them out versus repairing them for the most part.
And that's the Motorola units, Chief?
Correct.
And I think, you know, I mean, geez, when back when I was doing this, we had Motorola radios. Everything, it was all Motorola equipment, our handhelds, our radios in our cars. So obviously, it's a name I think we probably can trust. So, you know, I think it's a good first step. I think frankly, we're probably going to get this mandated eventually. And we're going to have to do it whether we want to do it or not. But I do see some real upside to it, and I think dipping our toe in the water and doing it incrementally, to me, makes a lot of sense. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Anybody else like to ask any questions or have any comments?
Mr. President.
Ms. Gilbert.
Yes, I'm Chief Ledwell, it was a wonderfully thorough report. And I'm going to echo Councilman Cavaci's thoughts. I've got a feeling we're going to soon be mandated for this also. So kind of breaking us in incrementally, I think is a great idea, and I'm all for this. I think it's going to end up showing benefits not only to our officers but also to the public. Because I know transparency is a huge issue that we're trying to share with the public. And I think this is a great way to demonstrate that. So I'm, thumbs up for me. I'd say, let's go ahead and do this.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Anyone else?
Mr. President.
Mr. Dayhoff.
Yeah, I'm really happy that we're getting ahead of the curve on this. And I think it's going to be a great tool in our toolbox. I think it's going to be a really big help for law enforcement in Westminster. And I'm really happy with all of the chief's initiatives with the continuum of force. The eight can't wait, the cameras. I think we're getting a lot of really positive attention for what we're doing with law enforcement in Westminster. I guess I only had one question, and I'm sorry, I don't know if you touched upon it or if I read it. But Chief, are we going to, we're going to standardize all the cameras throughout the county? Are all the agencies going to get the same thing?
I can't speak for the other agencies. I can tell you that the sheriff, myself, have, we're in the ones that did the trial and evaluation of this. The other chiefs were involved in the work group discussions. I know that Hamstead already uses this particular product. They have their own local server that they upload their footage onto. This particular system, which I would propose would be a cloud-based system, but it would be similar to the program that Hamstead currently has in place. And I can't speak for the other municipal agencies. I don't know what their plans are.
Okay. I'm really happy that we're moving forward with this. I think this is the future. And I'm really happy that we're ahead of the curve on this. That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Thanks, Chief. I think that was a pretty thorough presentation as well with a lot of great supporting documentation there. I know this is something you do routinely, but just mention that, of course, as you mentioned, the the cost will be significant. So let's keep an eye out for any aid we can possibly get from, you know, the state or the federal government on this. You know, I know that there's been a lot of talk about, you know, providing assistance in this area. So I guess we can keep a lookout for that.
We'll do.
Sounds to me that, you know, Chief, that you've got the council's blessing to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much. Ms. Cavaci, I believe you have a motion.
I do, Mr. President. Let me get that up in front of me. I just brought up the wrong document by mistake. Give me one second. Okay. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to go into a closed session immediately following this meeting under the statutory authority to close sessions under the Maryland Annotated Code, General Provision, Article dash three dash 305B, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction and any other personnel matters that affect one or more specific individuals.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Is there a second to Mr. Cavaci's motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. There's been a motion by Mr. Cavaci to go into a closed session. Seconded by Mr. Dayhoff. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it. We will go into a closed session at the conclusion of the regular portion of this meeting. And that concludes new business. Departmental reports. Ms. Matthews.
Thank you, President Pecoraro. Councilmember Dayhoff, do you have a report this evening on behalf of the Fire Department?
No report, ma'am. I think we got, I think we got called up at the last meeting. I'll double check.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Dayhoff. I just wanted to provide an update on a couple of items related to the 45 West Main renovation project. Tomorrow, I will be touring the building with our special projects manager, Tammy Palmer, Honey Kumar of Gant Brunet Architects, and a representative, Duron, which is the company that we're buying the furniture from. The purpose of the tour is to prepare for the delivery of the furniture package. Duron wanted to kind of get a lay of the land and get some logistical visuals in mind. Also, as we're nearing our project completion, a critical remaining step is the elevator inspection, and that will be conducted on Friday, February 12th. So hopefully, that will go well. Also, wanted to share this evening an update on the Bee City USA program. Our application, a copy of the resolution that was adopted by the mayor and common council and the required fee were submitted to the Bee City USA website on Friday, February 5th. Also, last Friday, there was a staff planning meeting with the Carroll County Beekeepers Association. Just a couple of items that came out of that meeting. The City's Department of Public Works will be providing a native plant species list as well as a list of local providers for those plants and trees, as well as a written integrated pest management plan to submit to the Bee City USA website. As you may recall, those were required actions that were set forth in your resolution. The Carroll County Beekeepers Association members are reaching out for people interested in serving on the committee for the Bee City USA program. Confirm committee members include Kate Fisher and Monica Schmidt of the Carroll County Beekeepers Association, as well as Councilmember Dayhoff. The Beekeepers Association will be reaching out to the Recreation and Parks Department staff about hosting a honey festival in September at the Wakefield Valley Park property as one of their community outreach events. The Beekeepers Association has also identified the community garden on 25th Street adjacent to Dodger Park as one of the sites of a pollinator garden. Our public work staff has also suggested the wetland area at King Park as a site for milkweed and other pollinator friendly plants. Not only would this help us with our Bee City USA designation compliance, but the plantings would also reduce the amount of maintenance that is required in this area, which is quite difficult to reach. And lastly, our Main Street manager, Sandy Anderson, will be reaching out to the downtown business owners to see who might be interested in planting and maintaining pollinator friendly tree pit gardens on Main Street. So with that, I'd like to call on our Director of Finance, Ms. Colston, for any information she'd like to share this evening.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. As I said, in response to Councilmember Dayhoff's question about the audit, we are in the final stages of that and looking forward to having that to present to council in the upcoming weeks. We've also begun meeting preliminarily with department heads to go over their initial budget requests. And that so far has started going pretty well. The department heads have been very cooperative in getting submissions to us and really putting some thought behind their numbers and the things that they're asking for. So I've been greatly appreciative of that. With that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Colston. I'd like to now call on Work Depot or Director of Community Planning and Development for anything he'd like to share.
I'm sorry. Sure. So last Tuesday, the Portisoning Appeals did hold their variance request hearing, and they did approve the variance for a deck to extend it in the side yard. This is for 35 West Moreland Street. Last Wednesday, the HCC did approve a historic rehab tax credit for 28 Liberty Street. This is right at the intersection of Liberty Street and Green Street. If you haven't had a chance to take a look at it, they did a really good job in the facade of this building to renovate it and paint the building. The HCC also discussed a cent- The HCC also discussed the centennial monument at Bell Grove Square. I know this topic came up last meeting. We have reached out to Wellman Conservation to re-repair the actual monument instead of replacing it. We also met with the HTC about relocating the monument. We're looking at moving the monument next to the bicentennial monument, just across the sidewalk, essentially from where the current monument was. We also reached out to the Women's Club of Westminster. They do maintain the Bell Grove Square. They are in favor of moving the monument as well, and we will work with them on the location and possible plantings. I'd like to thank Brian Demay and Steve Strasberg, working with me on the monument repair, and as well as Councilmember Dayhoff and his information for this history of Bell Grove Square and the monument. So that completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Depot. Mr. Dick, do you have any report this evening for the Public Works Department?
Yeah, just like to briefly share, you know, as we've been seeing, we've been dealing with seems like every two to three days, snow ice, and that seems going to be the pattern for the next week or so. Just to put it in perspective, hearing everybody giving some feedback here this afternoon, well, this evening, I'll be sure to pass that on to everybody in the departments. They've been putting in a lot of time. Just the past week and a half, the average person put in about sixty-five hours just for snow and ice removal. And, you know, that's a lot of time. And of course, it's always on the weekend for them too. So they'll be glad to hear, you know, there was some nice positive feedback from the Mayor and Common Council. Rather than that, the other good thing to hear was, you know, getting moving with the fiber. That's a constant battle for me every day of receiving calls and emails. I'm here, I'm there. Some of them are, you know, well within right against the city limit, others aren't. So, you know, people are paying attention to what's going on, so I'm glad to hear we'll be moving forward with that. Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay, Mr. President. And I have a question, or I'm sorry, Ms. Matthews, real quick for Mr. Dick. Just if since you're going to take the time to go back and let the the folks know about the job they're doing on snow removal, share this little piece of information with them. Three of my daily staff members at my office live in Pennsylvania, and they constantly talk about how they fight to get to the city limit through all this, you know, nastiness, and they're always relieved once they get into inside of Westminster City Limits because they said the roads are always significantly better. And some of them are driving, you know, a bit of a distance from up in PA, so please, please share that with them. That's, I, you know, I think it's one of the reasons we can keep some people that are willing to commute down here is because of the job they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gruber.
Good evening. Since the last council meeting, one of the most important events that the Recreation and Parks Department held was the second public input meeting for Wakefield Valley Park master planning process. Since that time, we have been working on digesting the input, responding to the email inquiries and comments, and of course, working alongside our consultants to refine the next iteration of the Wakefield Valley Master Plan. I did send out some information to you in an email that gave you some aggregate data on the response that we've received to date. So feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions on that information. And if interested, mark your calendars for our next and final Wakefield Valley Public Input Meeting scheduled for March third, again at the Carroll County Arts Center with seatings at six and seven fifteen PM. So in addition to the Wakefield project, as Mayor Dominic indicated, we are working on securing funding for additional progress on the Durbin House, which works in concert with our mastering master planning efforts at Wakefield. At the end of January, I did submit our intent to apply for a capital fund grant in the total amount of two hundred thousand dollars, of course, one hundred thousand dollars in grant funding, and a hundred thousand dollars in matching funds, which may be able the matching requirement may be able to be met through our Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant or the city's match for that particular grant. So I will be investigating those areas for a funding match so that it does not have to come from city funds directly. We are also in need of some help at the Fitness Center, so we have been scheduling and holding interviews for a number of open positions. Our forty-hour rec assistant one position was recently vacated by Bill Ox, and we are now looking for his replacement. We've had a couple interviews scheduled and have some promising leads for that position. We're also, we've collected applications for a fifteen-hour front desk and childcare attendant position and have not yet started the interview process for that. And then we are also going to be scheduling interviews to fill several part-time temporary front desk and childcare attendant positions at the Fitness Center. I was one of the budget meetings that Lydia spoke about. Lydia, thank you so much for an in-depth budget meeting, and I look forward to engaging in that process with you. And lastly, I am now, after submitting the intent to apply and understanding that we are okay to move ahead with our formal capital funding request through Maryland Historic Areas Authority, I will be working diligently on pulling together the details to finish that grant application. And lastly, we will just be moving ahead with continued promotion of the Celtic Cancer and now the Wine Stroll and Flower and Jazz Festivals. So thank you very much, and that concludes my report unless you have additional questions.
Ms. Matthews. Ms. Gruber, maybe you could take this opportunity to to fill in the council on the activities of the Advisory Board, the the Wrecking Park Advisory Board. I'm really excited. It's a great group, and I've been really excited about the meetings, and we have a meeting coming up tomorrow evening. And it's a great group, and I think we're going to look forward to some great things out of those folks.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for the reminder, Councilman Dayhoff. The Recreation and Park Advisory Board will hold its third meeting tomorrow evening at six PM. And one of the most exciting things is we are endeavoring into an exercise with the board to define a mission and vision and goals of which we hope will closely align with the same activities for the department. So not only is the board defining those items for themselves, it is allowing the department to to take a step back and look at our mission statement, dust it off a little bit, maybe renew it, revitalize it, and then set goals and initiatives to support that mission statement. So it's been a really engaging group of people. They're very energetic and fantastic to work with, so thank you very much for allowing the opportunity for that board to evolve. Our department will certainly be better for it.
Yeah, Councilwoman Gilbert and I were talking about the the mission and the vision statement. It's extremely comprehensive. It's quite a document. And I'm really excited to work with this group of folks. What is it, Jennifer Yang and Josh Ambrose have brought that initiative forward, and it's exciting to work with the chairs, Jessica. And I think that's going to be exciting also. Jessica Laird. Thank you.
Ms. McCullough, our Director of HR.
Good evening. On Wednesday, we will be conducting five interviews for the Director of Housing position. The HR department has been also working on various recruitments with the Department of Finance and also with the Rex Department.
Thank you, Ms. McCullough. Ms. Vasowski, our city clerk has a report for you this evening as well.
Sorry about that. I was having some difficulty. On January twenty-six, I attended a virtual election forum held by the Maryland Municipal Clerks Association. On January twenty-seven, I had a board meeting, a board of elections meeting, which I held, where I shared what I learned from the forum. The virtual election forum was held was an overall discussion regarding elections as a whole. During the forum, I took the opportunity to ask the municipal clerks how their process was regarding the announcement of candidates. Many shared that their municipal code did not include language regarding the announcements, but instead, on their declaration of candidate forms, they had a section where the candidate could provide the city with permission to announce their candidacy, as well as another section to provide a reporter with their email and telephone number. Another topic discussed was how to proceed with elections during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Other municipal clerks shared their experience where they encouraged voters to vote through absentee ballots. As a follow-up to this, another forum was held on February fourth to learn about the vote by mail. On February fifth, the Board of Elections held another meeting so that I could provide an update regarding the vote by mail. The board asked that I move forward with exploring the vote by mail. As it pulled together remaining questions such as the costs and procedures, I will report back to the board as well as the elected body. Another area of concern for the twenty-twenty-one election is due to the pandemic and the John Street Quarters locate the Fire Department being closed to the public. The city may need to find another polling location. By direction of the board, I am looking more into this as well, and that's all I have tonight.
Ms. Vasowski, President Pecoraro, I think that completes staff reports, and certainly we'd be happy to answer any questions that the common council have.
I thank you very much, Ms. Matthews. Mr. Dayhoff, did you have something you wanted to?
Yeah, I bet we can figure out the voting over at John Street Quarters.
All right, well, we'll we'll take that off. We'll take that offline, and if you've got some suggestions, you know, we're
Yeah, I I think we can I think we can figure that out. I think we can take that worry away.
All right, great. Thank you.
I believe I may have skipped over Chief Ledwell. My apologies for that, Steve.
That's okay. I already gave the other presentation, so I'd probably confuse it with that. So just a few quick things from the Police Department. On the third of February, we handled an incident at the town mall. It was pretty bizarre. We got a report that somebody had put a a clean diaper, but a diaper on somebody's side-view mirror in the parking lot of the mall. So we got there. It was a female victim. She was inside. She felt shaken up because she thought it might have been an attempt to lure her or do something like that. So when we were inside the mall, we were able to see the suspect on the camera. He was still there. So we went out and interviewed him, saw that he had additional diapers in the car. He says he was just playing a joke. We did a threat assessment on that individual, didn't find anything that would lead us to believe that was anything additional to what we discovered. We did arrest him and charge him with tampering with a motor vehicle. But I know that there was some circulation, I think, on Facebook about I think there's things that have gone around social media before about people putting notes on cars and then attempting to abduct individuals when they take the notes off the car. And I think there was some fear that that might have been the case in this particular incident, but we haven't developed any information that would lead us to believe that there was any additional danger. We are doing some follow-up tasks with our detectives just to make sure we're crossing all the Ts and dotting all the Is, but we do. We don't think there's any additional danger to the public at this point. We have good news on the front of our dispatch schedule transition. We finally got the sub-agreement for the county to to utilize our NCICRI database that has to be signed at the county level in the state. So we finally got that agreement. The county signed it and brought it back to the state. And then the county advised us that their projection is to be able to take over the night dispatch on or about April first. So we now have a target date for that particular changeover. As was mentioned twice earlier, relatively uneventful in the snow event so far, and kudos to the Public Works Department on their planning, treating, and plowing of the roads because it has been very uneventful as far as collisions go. We're kind of looking a little bit of a moving target with this security camera project. A lot of that has to do with the cost of running electricity and connectivity to the cameras. So it's hard. I know we talked about in prior meetings potentially adding additional sites, but I don't know that we're going to have that much money left in the in the funds once we add in the connectivity costs. On the flip side, the we could potentially, as Councilman Cavaci talked about earlier, relocate one of the potential camera locations, so we're looking at that possibility. And then finally, what Councilman Dayhoff talked about, the the eight can't wait. Essentially, the our use of force, our de-escalation, and a number of our other trainings and policies really have focused on meeting each of these points. And they were in there prior, but but we've made them very straightforward and upfront. Things like duty to intervene, duty to de-escalate, making essentially critical thinking part of the culture of the agency in response to a number of incidents. Making sure that we're keeping that in the forefront of everyone's mind here and that we're approaching things with that critical thinking mindset so that we have the best possible outcome for all of our interactions. So and then finally, the Leadership Carol Justice and Law Day, we're planning that for March the ninth, and we've kind of had to modify it because of the pandemic. We're trying to make it a little bit more fun this year with some interactive activities, so that's in the works, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And now, President Pecoraro, I think I hit everyone.
All right, very good. Thank you. Ms. Gilbert, did you have a question?
Um, thank you, Mr. President. I did. Ms. Matthews, and I know when you did your report on the Bee City, you kind of prompted me to remember that a little while back, we were talking about the be kind motto for Westminster. I believe it came out of a presentation. Did we ever, where is that kind of going or what happened to that? I'm just kind of curious.
I believe that came up during one of Mr. Dodge's presentations, I believe. I don't believe there's been any official direction yet, Councilmember Gilbert, from the Mayor and Common Council, about how you would like staff to proceed on that front. My sense was there was some support, but I don't believe any formal action has been taken.
All right. We should have maybe at the next meeting, we should have some conversation about that. I think there was a lot of interest on the part of the elected body to to pursue that, so we should we should look into that.
That would be great.
We will. We will discuss that, and we will. We will plan something for the next agenda.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dayhoff.
And another follow-up question, if I may, please. I'm still very much interested as a coefficient of the the Bee City Initiative. I really want to see the city move forward with the Sustainable Maryland program. I think it fits extremely well with with the what our city's all about, and it certainly fits in well with our Tree City Initiative and the Bee City Initiative. So I don't, I I'd like I'd like to move forward with that.
Thanks. Well, well, sorry, Ms. Matthews, go ahead.
I was going to say, I have had Ms. Palmer doing some work on that, basically reviewing existing city activities and likely point totals. Obviously, we won't know for sure until we submit. There are some aspects of that that the Mayor and Common Council might like to discuss. So President Pecoraro, with your concurrence, perhaps we can slot that item on the next agenda as well for discussion.
That sounds like a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That's it, Ms. Matthews?
Yes, it is. Thank you very much.
All right, great. So with that, that includes the most of the agenda. The final item on our agenda is citizens' comments. When we invite the public to address the mayor and council on any issues that pertain to tonight's agenda or any other city issues. During these virtual meetings, we will invite comments to be sent to our commit to our city clerk at comments@westgov.com. Commentators should include their address and phone number with their comments. At this time in every meeting, I will read out the comments we have received. And that concludes our agenda and the meeting. And so with that, without objection, we are adjourned. Hope everybody stays safe, and we will see you again in two weeks. Thank you very much.